Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known. The agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the New Coaster on January 14, 2022, via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the administrative building, building to board district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 14, 2022. Our mission statement: Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses skills and character to succeed in diverse, evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Als.
Here.
Ms. Breach.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. Latarocca.
Here.
Mr. Remy.
Ms. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Ms. Zysinski.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Members of the board, Mr. Grillo is going to be joining us tonight electronically. You'll recall that the board's policy regarding electronic participation in board meetings requires the board to vote to permit the board member to appear and attend and participate electronically remotely. So with that, I'd like to know if there's a motion to approve Mr. Grillo's attendance this evening and participation this evening in the meetings electronically via the Internet?
Motion.
Sorry.
No, I'll take a roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Als.
Yes.
Mr. Latarocca.
Yes.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Ms. Zysinski.
Motion carries.
Please rise at a flag salute.
(Inaudible) America, and to the Republic of America, stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With regard to the Finance Committee, the first issue we discussed, applying for state stabilization aid. The applications have now been out. The administration met with those involved in receiving them. The deadline is September 16th. The district, under this program, the district must identify projects that it can no longer provide based on a loss of aid, describe how the program or project will continue based on a one-time allocation of funds, and we need to complete a statement of need, pass a board resolution approving the request for a specific dollar amount based upon those specific projects, and in addition, provide other financial and staffing information. So they're quite a bit involved on the administration part. The committee as a whole in discussing this thought leaving it up to the administration as to specific projects and things, but felt it was worth it to go ahead and apply for the aid at this point. Second issue was good news. As you remember, there was a lawsuit filed in New Jersey with regard to districts that lost aid, and yet New Jersey and the Department of Education received federal funding based upon the pandemic. There was a requirement in the federal funding that the state could not reduce aid and still receive that federal funding. In other words, replace state aid going out to particular districts with federal monies. And that lawsuit was won by, I believe the organization was Education Law Center. And as a result, the state is, will be providing us with an additional $6.67 million as a one-time award this year. The committee discussed possible uses for these funds, as we expect the administration will do, could refund some salary costs charged to the ESER funding this year, or holding these funds to supplement the loss of aid anticipated in 2024. Committee at that point didn't reach any consensus yet. I'll kind of throw out my personal opinion that I think we want to be very conservative in spending and look at replacing the ESER funding for salaries next year as we're going to have a huge deficit in how we've stopgapped this year. But that's something for further discussions and overall is great news. Third item is five-year budget plan. District administration met with the county superintendent and business administrator to review that plan. They requested more information, the use of the Barack Obama building, and the relocation of the central office, and in addition, they asked for certain cost information regarding various district programs that may have been discontinued due to a shortfall in the budget. An updated draft of that plan is due back to the county early next month. Fourth, with regard to ESER, phase two of our ESER spending has been bid. The architect and supervisor of building and grounds conducted a site inspection for contractors earlier this month. Bid submissions are due Thursday, September 15, and it's this bid that's going to involve new unit ventilators with heating and cooling, and new boilers for Dr. Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School. Fifth point, committee also discussed the possible relocation sites for central office. The district architect has been in the district and is reviewing options and space and giving more information to the administration regarding Barack Obama, the upper elementary school, and the Thurgood Marshall Buildings. Finally, if you recall, we're doing a project at Thurgood Marshall where the flooring surface in all-purpose room or media room had to be replaced. The state has now changed the required, it was because of a flooring surface that was with a problem that was uncovered by the state with regard to flooring surfaces throughout the entire state and schools. They're changing that surface yet again, but we're still on schedule. It won't hit right as school starts, but we are on schedule to complete by September 13th. And then we kind of really morphed and summarized the building and grounds committee meeting as well. No new facility requests, and the only additional item that wasn't covered in finance, Mr. Sosa has been in contact with both the sound company and the cement contractor with regard to the repairs at Asbury Park High School Stadium. Both of those entities are, as you might imagine, with the pandemic and supply chain still experiencing delays on their products, but orders have been placed, will be scheduled with the district as soon as they're received. And our architect is staying on top of all entities involved in all of these projects as that issue of supply chain is kind of endemic to everything we're working on right now. And so that would conclude finance as well as building and grounds. Any questions?
Just to add some clarification and updates. First, regarding the five-year plan, that draft was sent in the weekly update along with the Blue Bishop bulletin to all board members today. We did inform the county superintendent that there were some alter, other alterations that needed to be made, and we will do that. But in terms of prolonging the submission to the board, I wanted to make sure that you all had that, as I indicated it last month, that I would be providing that information to you. Second piece regarding the relocation of central office, as I've indicated before, we're going to strongly look at relocating to the Obama School. That was one of the conversations that we had with the architect on yesterday. It was yesterday, correct? And it's all blending together very quickly, right? And so we're looking at ensuring that in that transition, our footprint in other facilities, whether it be the maintenance shop and other locations, to be mindful of our projected budget shortfalls coming next year, that we're very mindful of that. But we will be looking to, at the end of our lease of 910 Fourth Avenue, to proceed to the Obama School as the new location of central office. And there may be some modifications and updates to the first floor, but, and some of the facility usage in terms of bathrooms and things of that nature. But we'll, you know, keep the board updated on that and with a timeline to ensure that at the conclusion of the lease that we are properly moved. What I will be doing is, to the board, possibly for next month, putting a recommendation for some support for an organizer to do that. But I'll be discussing that with Ms. Morris and going from there. I think those were the major, you know, two points that needed to be addressed.
Ms. Ricks.
I remembered to turn on the mic. Hi, everyone. The curriculum and instruction committee met on August 24th. We discuss license, a 3D license for grade seven and 12. It's designed to support English learners at various stages of learning English. It's aligned with the English language arts and English language development. It covers speaking, listening, writing, reading at a cost of $78,000. We also discussed the high school to partner with Empower Somerset to provide reducing risk programs to ninth through 12th grade, which addresses risk assessment, communication, decision-making, planning, refusal strategies, and role-playing. Program will also utilize trained district staff to help with this process, and students will be able to tune in virtually or in person. There is also a parent component, which I'm always glad to see that we include parents in certain aspect of their children's education, the parent component, train parents who constantly speak to their teens about common youth risk factors. There is a pre-K after-school program. There is also one for the Martin Luther King School. It's an after-school program that will run from 2:45 PM to 5:15 PM at the Bradley, at Thurgood and Martin Luther King, as I said, and the cost is not to exceed $380,000. We also discussed a forensic science program that uses my lab, Criminal Justice Online Program. This is a six-year license that includes interactive simulation and modern crime lab at a cost of $24,194 to the district. And the one thing I'm pretty, I guess, satisfied with is the environmental science has an earth science project curriculum, and they're going to study osprey observation. And this is in partnership with, say, the Coastal Wildlife Association and also with the Asbury Park Rotary Club. The cost is not to exceed, for us, $3,887. And as I understand it, that we have, I think we discussed this with Dr. Adams when we met last week, about an osprey nest right on our own high school field. And our, yeah, and our student will get to observe that, which I think is pretty awesome. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Letina.
Currently, we have no new business or policy.
Okay. As for athletics, I'm sorry, I was getting information off my phone. We are in discussion about partnering with, possibly with First Tee, it's a golf course for students, and then also discussion about the recognition of the 1984 undefeated football team. And also as a reminder, the homecoming is October 7th. And that's all for committee. September 9th is the first football game? Yes, thank you.
Madam President, that is when that team, the 1984 team, will be recognized at the first football game, the September 9th.
Before we open a public meeting, we're going to have a few words from Adam, our lawyer.
Good evening. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the president and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public meeting.
Good evening. Good to see you all, and pray that you had a good summer so far. Beverly Lyons, 1701 Ocean Avenue here in Grando Asbury Park. I'd like to say to you all, thank you for all that you are doing, have been doing, and you're presently doing, and what you will do. This week, something came to me that maybe some of you could relate to and a lot of you don't, but in my day coming up, to be corrected, my mom and dad would use a little switch on my legs, and I would choose a small one, and she would send my brothers out, and they came back with me like a sapling. But what my point is, that working together, collaboration is so important. If we have one little rod, it has power in its size, but when you add the other sizes with it and combine, it's greater power. So I'm looking forward to this new school year, moving forward, that there'll be more collaboration from the community, little old me, and some others that want to work with the Board of Education to surround and support our children. You're doing a fantastic job, but you can't do it all alone. And I represent the statewide organizing education committee as well as West Side Citizens United, and we would like to sit with you, your committees, to not only hear, but should it be that we could brainstorm to strengthen the fabric that supports our kids. Call me old, call me emotional, but the facts are the facts. We have to work together. And if it means going out into the community, I know we do festive things, we have, we meet the public out, you know, at festive occasions or events, but if it means knocking on the door, I'm willing. And there are others that are willing to let the parents know that this is the greatest investment they could ever make in their life, and especially their children's lives. So if they see us working together, it might spark something. I don't know how much, how long, but it just may spark something. So I'm grateful for you, and I do look forward to having the opportunity to work with any of you, all of you, so we can just move forward with our children. Asbury Park is a dynamite place. We've had issues, but we can come back and come back stronger. And with collaboration, it can be done. With understanding, it can be done. With communication, it can be done. It really can be done. We support our children in sports and activities of whatever they have to do, we can support them together in their education. I also am looking forward to the fact of hearing about the new student handbook. I know we were talking about it being the new draft coming up. That is a concern, so when parents, bless God. Okay, when parents come to us, we'll be able to say, it's in the handbook, read it. You don't understand it? Get with someone who can explain. Also, the fact of parents being able to opt their children out of being taught the new sex education curriculum, if that's available to the parents, they need to know that, as well as having a student member on the board. Thank you. I love you guys. You don't know how much I seek the Lord for you all. And I'm looking for greater things. I really am. Not because I'm seeing it, I know that we have the ability to do it. Thank you.
I guess at this time, we'll close public participation.
Point of privilege. First, I want to thank you for your participation in our student advisory committee. As you know, you are very instrumental in helping us relaunch our school uniforms as our active community member, and it was a long staking process, and you were actively engaged in that process with us and with our students in our virtual meetings, and so we thank you for that. And part of the student advisory committee this year, we will be selecting a student who will be our board liaison, and so that was one of the things that we had discussed in our student advisory committee last year leading into this year. As far as the community participation, we welcome those voices of support, whether they be at the school level or at central office, and particularly in some of our committee and community aspects. So if any of those individuals, you can gather the name and what those interests are, and we can begin to sort of align their interest and focus with supporting our school effort or being an active voice in some of our other committees. So we look forward to that. We also look forward to various surveys that we put out that require community input, and again, I'll definitely be tapping you on the shoulder for your support and voice and insight that have, like you have been this past academic year. So I just wanted to respond to that.
We're going to take a small break and move back at 7. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Motion. Thank you so much for your patience. In accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and extent known. The agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the New Coaster on January 14, 2022, via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the administration building board, building to board district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 14, 2022. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Als.
Present.
Ms. Breach.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. Latarocca.
Here.
Mr. Remy.
Here.
Ms. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Yes.
Ms. Zysinski.
Ms. Cook. Here.
Board members, before we get started this evening with the regular public meeting, Mr. Grillo will be joining us by video or internet link. The board's policy requires that the board approve a board member's request to join by video, and so at this time, I'd like to know if there's a motion, or I'd like to have a motion to approve Mr. Grillo's attendance and full participation in this board meeting this evening.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Please rise at a flag salute.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No presentations, ma'am.
In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the board president and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the board president and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public rescription, please. Thank you. At this time, we'll open up public participation, please.
Hello, it's Akia Foster, resident of Asbury Park. Uh, it's, I just have more or less a question or maybe a suggestion to just be pondered on by the board. With them bringing back the uniform policy, I remember at one time there was a laundry service that was available to the students and I was just wondering if that was available to all of the students of Asbury Park and if there's any need for any uh donations for like detergent and things of that nature, so that with the students wearing uniforms, so we can at least make sure that they're wearing clean uniforms on a regular basis. That was that.
At this time, we'll close public participation.
Hello, uh, to respond to the question regarding the uniforms, um, as you know, we've engaged in that process for about um I would say since January up until um the end of school, um, we had a community person. As you also know, we have the conscious project, which we have a uni, I mean a washing machine and dryer facilities at the high school. Um, what we will be doing is looking at how we can better serve some of those students that may be at the elementary or upper elementary that may need to utilize those facilities, uh, those, those resources at the high school. But we also have been able to provide um and will provide for those families that can't afford through a first come, first served basis uh uniforms um through filling out the actual voucher um for them. I think as of uh last week, we have provided well over um twenty twenty seven families with uh uniforms um that, and we still will be providing and allocating some additional resources for our students in pre-K through third grade through some of our resources from the early childhood. But um to answer again explicitly, we're going to be working and discussing on how we can make sure that those students who are at the younger grades who may need to utilize those resources at the high school um are able to do so.
Uh, Mr. Hastings, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, did we not just recently install the middle school washer and dryers? That were donated years ago?
Though, uh, Ms., Ms. Ricks and I did a, a facilities tour and that's the um life skills class. So right now, those rooms with the um washing machine and dryer for that life skills class, the CI class, uh, which I want to thank Mrs. Lau, who's our director of special services for overseeing that and Clem Bramley, who's no longer with us. Uh, but we, again, we're going to look at how we can effectively um utilize those resources at the given location because although there is a facility, I mean, those resources at the upper elementary, we would still have two buildings that may need to utilize those resources. They're good in Bramley.
So to, to piggyback on that, if you got a donation for the other two schools, a washer and dryer for the, the two elementary schools, is that something that could alleviate some of that little pressure as far as the high school and middle school?
Well, we do have washing machines and dryers in preschool, but we still want to work out the flow of how that would happen, right? Uh, because that would lead to students and going through that process. So we want to do it right, but we do have the resources for that. But we want to make sure that we kind of plan it out so it's just not haphazardly done. So if someone wants to, you know, we're eight point six million dollars in, in, in the hole. Um, so if anyone would like to donate um the hookup, um, we, you know, in terms, not the hookup in terms of money. The hookup in terms of the machines, the machine, let me say that clearly. This is not Master P, not the movie The Hookup. We need the uh machines and those resources.
We, we have machines, but it's very costly in a school building to run the plumbing and the electric to those locations. So that's, that's the costly part of it.
But excellent question.
We have a comment for Mr. Grillo.
I was just gonna say, have we reached out to JCP and L to help with, with the possible hookup or something like that?
Uh, we will be discussing that in Buildings and Grounds Committee and we will be um making sure we reach out to Mr. Sosa as well as um exploring those options. But as I said, right now, the functioning um washer and dryers are at the high school um besides the uh early childhood. So the upper elementary will still require some um um water and electrical, plumbing and electrical um work being done. And so that's where my um commentary regarding doing it right and making sure the resources are effectively accessible. Oh, no, pardon me. Uh, superintendent's report. Um, briefly, the complication for the district will be on September the sixth. Um, beginning Monday, our administrative retreat will be taking place Monday at the parent center where we'll be doing an extensive training on the Danielson Framework for Evaluations um led by our HR director with over twenty plus years of experience in administration and leadership uh from elementary through middle and secondary. Uh, we will also be meeting and providing additional trainings at uh Brookdale um on Tuesday through Thursday with our various other directors leading um various workshops from social emotional learning by Dr. Christie Howard Morris, who also led a responsive classroom workshop yesterday for our social workers and um some of our other support uh staff in the Department of Student Services. And so we are gearing up for an exciting year. Um, just on Wednes, no, Tuesday, no, Wednesday, excuse me. It's all blending together. Uh, we held a labor relations meeting with the APEA, uh, which I would characterize as exceptionally positive and productive. Um, and we're looking to work collaboratively and moving the district forward um with understanding um on some of our collective needs for uh the students. Um, and so the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year looks very promising. Uh, we are prepared and ready for our students um and for our staff and we look um forward to moving um the district forward with a lot of work um finalized by our goal setting by each department, which we will be, like we did last year, um providing that, those goals on our district webpage for the entire community to see what our goals are by department and focuses so that we at the end of the year, we can report out one of the achievement of those goals.
Could I have a motion for items nine and ten on page eight two? Any questions or comments? Mr. Lata Raca? Ms. Cook? Ms. Als?
Yeah.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, on ten, I'm thinking on nine.
Mr. Grillo? Lost Mr. Grillo? Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Okay.
Motion carries.
Madam President, I would ask for a consent agenda on all items from B one through B one, number one, through B eight, number three. Hope that includes the agenda? Yes.
Move it. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Grillo?
Sorry, quick comment. I don't see it on here, but we did mention it in your report from the athletic committee. Uh, to go back to the first home game, uh, September ninth, it's something that was in the works back in twenty twenty to honor that undefeated team and through COVID, um, had some setbacks. They already purchased their rings. They've already done all what they need to do. And I just want to, hopefully that we have a good turnout that day. It's all, it's already paid for. It's already covered. So you know, it's nice to be able to honor a team, you know, almost years after the fact. So I just wanted to put that out there.
I just get clarification on item nineteen uh on B seven. My thinking was whether that would go toward the law enforcement academy and, and in light of smaller student enrollment, we're going to do that. So, thanks.
Uh, so if I'm understanding item seventeen, B seven, the after school K two six, after school academy?
Nineteen on B seven. Just the, how, how we're going to utilize that in light of recent developments with law enforcement? Or, or will we call that?
Well, again, this will also cover one of our science um expectations, yes, uh, because as you know, science instructors are in short supply, chemistry and, and others. So this online class will serve as a higher level uh science course to be provided to those students. Yes, uh, and will be facilitated by a live um staff member.
This is all items B one, uh, number one to B eight, number three. Ms. Cook? Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Als?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Stay on B two, yeah. And B four, forty.
Yes, on all of those?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lata Raca?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
I'd like to uh welcome Ms. Rachel Adam, Adamzak, yeah, Adamzak, sorry. Um, who will be our uh new supervisor of early childhood. Um, so if you would give her a round of applause and welcome her. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Could I have a motion for all items C one, number one, to C three, number nine?
Next.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? This is for all items C one, number one, C three, number nine. Ms. Cook? Ms. Breach?
Uh, stay on C two A and C two E, C three, set, all, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Als?
I'm going to stay from C one, C two.
Thank you. Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lata Raca?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
All items carry.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion.